Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electronic devices off or vibrate at this time. And Mr. Bob McDaniel, would you please leave us in our presence, please, sir?
Heavenly Father, Proverbs tells us that the King's heart is like channels of water in your hands, and you direct them any way that you please. We know you are all-knowing, all-powerful. And so we pray for your wisdom tonight, Heavenly Father, as we make decisions that bring glory and honor to your name. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pray that the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And before going any further, we want to welcome Mr. Tommy Turner as our new city administrator. And Tommy, this is our first meeting tonight. So those of you that are aware of it or not aware of it, here's our new man, Mr. Tommy Turner, local, home-based.
I didn't think I was gonna do that, so...
Bring the water home for initiation?
Yeah. That's a deal.
All right, until approval of the minutes of the August 11th and August 20th, 2018 meeting, please. You should have both of those in your packet.
I saw some errors on the August 11th. Now, at the end of the executive session, where the council convened in session until 6:00 P.M., there's a commission of two commissioners, but their names are there. The commissioner made the motion to one second, so I'll list it. And then adjournment paragraph where Rick made the motion to adjourn, the time is earlier than previous.
Can't find the reference.
Yeah. And that was all I saw personally.
Sir?
That was all I saw.
Okay. Anyone else? No one else is speaking? All right, once you accept the minutes with corrections made, please.
Good move.
Second? All in favor, say aye. All right, and following the agenda, we're going to change up Agenda Item 5 and Agenda Item 4 and flip those two. We're going to open a public hearing on the proposed city tax rate for 2018. So basically, all citizens are invited to attend the public city council with written or oral comments and questions related to the proposed city tax rate. This year, the proposed tax rate of .0532428 per hundred will raise more total property tax than last year's budget by $62,952, or 7.70%. And of that amount, $164 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year. The proposed use of the increase in total tax revenue is for the increases in insurance costs. So, anyone have any comment? No written or oral?
I'm concerned about the property taxes going up as a business owner here in town. Our values went up last year along with the tax rate going up. And I'm just concerned about an additional tax rate going up and don't really know what the values will, how that will affect us in the coming year.
Since the property values went up, we've really stayed the same, you know?
Well, mine comes through, as a business owner, my property valuation comes through some, I don't know what they call themselves, they're out of sound and tone. It's the industrial side, and they assess the value. And it seemed like they raised our values quite a bit last year.
That's City County. The city doesn't do any value properties.
Okay, I'm sorry.
City is not responsible for any of the property values. That's all done to the county.
Okay.
Okay. So all we're allowed to do is to try to control this, which this year, we stayed the same since we knew that those were going up. So we stayed the same because the values went up.
Okay.
Okay.
The pickers are praised today. They can finagle it in the way they want to.
They, not us. But yes, that was, that was, that was a lot of people around town. We heard about it. We can't get blamed for it, but it was nuts.
I thought I had seen that between 2017 and 2018, I thought the city tax rate also went up, like, by two cents. I could be wrong.
From '16 to '17?
From the '17 to '18.
That is possible. I don't recall, but I'm gonna say yes. I know we did go up either '16 or '17 at that time, because we had not in the past.
Okay.
But it was only after we had done that, we calculated it. And I want to say it was a total across the board citywide, right at $80,000. And there's a lot of people complaining about streets and other items. And $80,000 for a city our size was not that big. All right. Anybody else? Everybody's with? All right. We're gonna go ahead and close public hearing and move forward. Yes, you did. All right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Is anyone here, not on the regular agenda, this evening? I didn't think so. All right, moving forward, the city council may consider, discuss, or take action on a request from Stan Vito to close Railroad Avenue between Broadway and Sixth Street for his October Lone Star Market to be held on October 26th and 27th, 2018. Is this the same as it has been in previous years?
Yes.
And the street department will just do the barricades and block it off? Monster? If I have any comments, sir? No?
So, Sam, you don't have this in the packs, up at Pucito, do you?
Normally, they actually have a lot of business up at this because a lot of people walk across the street.
Isn't the local street ring food now?
Snack bar food, as far as I know.
It's a full, it's a full cafe.
Oh, it is.
It's not, it's not Mexican food, but...
Well, they've never come forward to complain about it. They normally say that it's been cheap, positive.
The lawyers, Brian made it back though. She said, just leave it alone. So, I'm okay.
Okay. All right, motion to close Broadway and Sixth Street on October, oh, excuse me, October 26th and 27th, 2018 for Lone Star Market to be held.
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Sir?
All in favor, say aye. Thank you, thank you. All right, city council may consider, discuss, or take action on the recommendation from the planning and zoning board concerning variance request from Frontier Communications to install a wireless tower on their property located at 809 North Eighth Street. You should have that information from the planning and zoning in your packet.
Information?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no rep for Frontier here. They did send me an email, and went ahead and turned on the agenda because of the way I've written it. I wasn't real sure. At this time, Frontier will explore other options for towers. So, need to discuss that September 4th, council meeting. I'm assuming they left out a word, so they're gonna drop this.
They're gonna drop one for with this hour?
Yeah, they're gonna drop it right up there.
Okay. So from planning and zoning, they had denied it, correct? And I have a feeling that's why you tended to see it in the report.
Yeah, and if y'all don't mind, if y'all would allow it?
You're good?
See ya!
Have a good evening, sir. Sorry to waste your time. Have a good evening.
Well, actually, that's why we're here too.
Okay.
We're totally against it.
Okay.
It'll basically be in the background.
Go ahead. Other residents that basically said the same, they were against it?
Uh, yeah, I think that's the, at the 10th meeting, there were three, three or something, or four.
Then you had four opposed by letter.
Yeah.
So all those are basically directly around it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then, moving forward, and...
There you go. Even though this email is somewhat of a formality, should we still vote it down?
Yes, I think you should.
Then I make a vote motion to deny that request.
That was where I was going.
I'll second that motion.
I was going to agree with planning and zoning and going to deny it. All right. Bob motion, Jason second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, city council may consider, discuss, or take action on the recommendation from the planning and zoning board concerning the variance request from Deborah McDonald to build the carport at 503 North Eleventh. Steve, do you have any comment on this one?
Uh, planning and zoning, uh, they reviewed this one also. This is Jones that lives beside it. You know, it would be right there on his fence line. And, uh, his fear is that, and what the lady told me, you know, as soon as she gets that house fixed up, she's gonna set it. And, uh, you know, putting the carport leg right there by his fence, later on, someone could decide to put a wall up there. And if they do, it wouldn't be a way to get in there and keep it cleaned out. And it will be imposing on the five-foot setback. And so, they didn't review it all. Miss McDonald's not here, and nor will she have to be in here.
All right, then I need a motion to deny the variance for Deborah McDonald to build a carport at 503 North Eleventh and staying in compliance with planning and zoning's request.
Good move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, consider approval of building permits? I believe we had one, and then she had some others.
We had one. Should we have on this wall? Uh, this is gonna be out at 20, 24th Huthie, which is the old barricade. And we want to impose a patio. Shouldn't be any problem with it. It's plenty of good funds.
The one along the front or the one in the back, or?
Uh, I think one in front.
There are plenty ways off the road.
Yes, well, there's another setback that I heard.
Okay. Right. Motion to accept building permits presented, please?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Move.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. All right, here's the city administrator's bi-weekly report, please.
Pick it up, Tom. Yeah. Trying to put together some numbers so we can kind of start tracking what we're doing. When I got here, we started looking at work orders. And, uh, most of the work orders we get are called in from citizens. Say you have a water leak or, you know, some tree, tree limbs to be picked up. And so we've started breaking it down into, uh, and a lot of this has not been tracked. So we're, we're starting now. Uh, we had 47 calls for service from 20 August to 31st of August for the street department. And 36 resolved, and we got 12 still in progress. And a lot of those are just tree limbs and stuff like that need to be picked up. Water department, we had 104 calls for service, 102 of those are resolved, and two are not. One is a sewer, and one is a water leak that we're working on today. So, and y'all let me know if this is something y'all like to see or want to expand.
I'm kind of amazed there's that many calls in 11 days?
Uh huh, yeah.
Oh, crap.
Yeah, and like I said, we didn't get them all. This is just, you know, we started tracking them. Man-hours worked in August. We have, uh, in a, in a two-week period, uh, the, the first part of August was 3,000 man-hours from 15 August to 31st. It was 2,695 man-hours. Now, there was a 10% change, but the pool closed in that period of time. So your man-hours went down. Uh, we had overtime work that went from 102 to 151. So, we're, I'm trying to figure out where that 48% spike went. And maybe because it rained, and we had a bunch of, uh, you know, pregnancy problems or something like that, but I gotta find out where that's at. But this is a good way to track where your time is going, you know? And, uh, so I just wanted to kind of, this is kind of a, what do you call it? A rough draft early, uh, and we can tweak it in different places as we go. Our, our August billing cycle, we have, uh, we had 1,847 meters. These are meters installed that we're tracking. This period, we went from 147, 1847 to 1855. So we had a .43% increase. Total gallons billed, uh, for the previous periods. And, and our, our billing period breaks at the 15th of every month. So from 15th to 15th. So basically, you're looking at July to August. Uh, was 14,0346,477 gallons that we billed out. The bills that just went up this month was for 13,000, 929,984 gallons. And so we had a drop in the, the percentage, 2% drop, well, almost 3%. Uh, dollars that we billed out the previous month was $257,742.81. Uh, this period, $255,099.56. So we had a decrease, which is commensurate with the, the billed amount. And we have a total unpaid from the last month, the last billing cycle, was $882. So you're looking at maybe 84, and those are typically, they either moved out of town or they moved from house to house. And, uh, the way we track our, our, our billing is each house has its own unit number or account number. So Jason could live in one house and then move to another, but it gets a different account, because each one, each house is by account, so...
On the current active meters up there, uh, you're talking about 1847 previous period and 1855, those additional meters, are those new ones that you just installed?
Yes.
Okay, so are those some of the outlined meters?
Well, you mean, we installed for, no. These are as an active customer's.
New accounts.
They're new accounts.
New accounts, right.
That's basically paying accounts versus non-paying accounts.
Yeah.
So if we turn one on, they go into that number. If they're odd, they're, they're subtracted.
If somebody's delayed within their account and they switch calls, do we track them?
We track them.
No.
No, it's like, no, no, we track them. And we require deposit for new accounts. Let's see, we had our first, well, my first safety meeting that we attended on 31st of August. We're gonna have them every Friday, so every week we'll have a safety meeting. I had Brent as our, is gonna be our safety, our safety officer. And he's gonna be in charge of monitoring, uh, movement of personnel and equipment, you know? And, uh, we're, we're starting a safety program uh, so we can orientate all employees and, uh, on proper safety procedures, you know, equipment handling, and things of that nature. So this was our first one. We'll have them every week. We got some projects going on. I need to make that bigger next time. Yeah, we have our 13th Street Bridge project. Over on 13th Street where we have the big dip, you have the bridge that was built in 1930 for WPA. That drainage had, had, uh, built up. And, and we got a, a water main going through there, which creates a natural dam. So we're cleaning the, uh, uh, the debris, the sand, the, you know, the dirt. We have pictures of that, I think, next. There we go. We have a before on the left-hand side and an after where we're, we're starting to clean up all the vegetation and get a channel cut through there. Let's see, I think the next one, there we go. This is on the backside. There, there's just, it, it backs all the way up to Ninth Street, you know, so we're hoping this will improve our drainage. And, uh, we're gonna run it all the way out to the, to the Colorado River.
Which is nice.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and while we're there, we're gonna take out that dip and drop a culvert in there and, uh, make it smooth. I don't know how many, I don't know, I probably got two or three vehicles that needed new front ends because of that. So if we can straighten that out and get it running. Uh, and some of the, the brick wall had fallen off. People have run into it over the years, probably the last 50 years. And we found them at the bottom of it. Uh, so we're gonna reset some of those and try and, uh, just, you know, the, the bridge itself is, is really good, it's really well-built. And, uh, so we don't have to really do, we'll pave it, pave over it, but structurally, it's very sound, so...
The problem is it's been touched in 50 years.
Well, yeah, I don't know. It's been like that for as long as I can remember. But now we'll clean it out, and it, it'll run really well.
That was on the backup on 13th Street. It was all the way up until 11th.
Yeah, all the way.
And up there by my house, we all...
Wait, and it runs right up Ninth Street? If you look at the whole map, you'll see where the creek...
Yeah, it was right, yeah. It backs up pretty bad when this stuff's not taken care of.
Yeah, so we're hoping this will improve. And, uh, and like I said, taking the dip out and, and, uh, it's kind of a, what do you call it? A, a landmark.
The dip. Relocate it to some...
Yeah. I think we'd have more if we could kick it back if it was the bridge.
Well, it got hit. One of our citizens lost his whole car.
Yeah, so, yeah, and see, you can see how that, that pipe on your process is creating a dam effect. And it's just, it's holding that water back there. And once we take that pipe out, uh, we're, we're gonna, it's, it's bedrock under there. So we're gonna drill down, drop the pipe, and then, uh, it'll be...
That's an active main?
Yeah. But, uh, and we were doing pretty good till it rained, so it stopped progress on that. But, uh, what else is... Oh, yeah, uh, our second, our other project, we're, we're starting working in the alleyways and downtown, cleaning up vegetation, uh, and a lot of dirt, debris, leaves. Uh, there's some trash laying around here and there. Uh, so we can clean it up, and, uh, it'll be easier to maintain. And we put people on a schedule to go down once a week, you know, to sweep, take out, you know, little, little vegetation. Because right now, we had some big trees growing in the alleyways. And, uh, so, so we're gonna try to get that on a schedule and...
This is something another citizen approached me about was some of the weeds growing right there on that.
Yeah.
They said there's a maze thought about the bud somewhere around downtown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, the next one?
Uh, that's all. You had the sidewalk renovation?
Yeah, 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 we're, some of the sidewalks have some big potholes, and it's just aged, you know? And, and one of our sidewalks is sunk in. And, uh, so we're hoping the next few weeks to start, uh, uh, filling the holes and renovate some of the curves. And, you know, it's, it's a small project in front of somebody's building, but it's, you know, big, citywide. So, uh, then we've already started. Some guys have been down there to, uh, fill in some of the little potholes, which, uh, that we've been working on. Steve is looking at getting some equipment to even some of the stuff out that we have. Like you have a, a sidewalk here and a sidewalk kind of sloping. So if we can even that out, it might, like, yeah.
Look better, and we can cut that.
Well, yeah, and then, you know...
Give you a script.
Exactly, so, which is what we're hoping for, so... And was that it?
That's it.
Okay. That's it. Uh, we just, I've been evaluating where, where we are with our people. We have water department, the street department, and, uh, we have, uh, like you were saying earlier, our roads need help. We still have new poly pipe that needs to be put in the ground for service. And, uh, we've been putting out a lot of fires, I've noticed. And, uh, so instead of being powermen, we're, we're gonna migrate to working on progress. And, uh, so we're gonna start dedicating teams. Well, I'm gonna sit down with, uh, with our water department this week and map out where we're at on replacing the, the old pipe. And we have, still have some, I mean, it's scattered about town and different places. So once we identify that, we can get a map and start setting priorities and start moving forward with a team just dedicated for that, and then a team dedicated for emergencies. So, you know, if somebody has a, a water leak or sewer problem, you know, they can manage that while we're still working on progress. And so that's where we're going with water. And then working with the streets, doing the same thing, trying to identify what needs to be done, you know, versus what has been done and what priority are, because you got, you got really bad, and you got bad, you know? So it, it, there's a range. And, and as long as, you know, we're not overlapping on our piping schedule or administance schedule, then we should be able to map out a path forward on our roads department, so... And hopefully, we'll get that done this month. That's our plan. Questions?
I have a question. Tony, do you intend to, through the years, try to get to all of the streets that...
Of course, yes.
Would like to put our side street view bank on the list. They've done it partially, but between 8th and 9th, we've got this huge manhole in the middle of it, and it's just sunk and sunk and sunk.
The street has a manhole still, it sticks up?
So it sticks up quite a bit.
So people are dragging and...
Yeah. According to our guys, the, when they were setting those manhole covers before, they were, they believed that to keep water out, they had to set it up. So as we're going through replacing or working on the road, we're, we're moving it down so it doesn't create a hazard. And then, yes, we'll eventually get to everything. There's two ways that we can, I mean, to repair the road. One is a patch, really, and, uh, which we might use on the worst ones right now. The, the best way would be to take it up, see what the base looks like, and if it needs to be replaced, take it up. And it's, you know, kind of pricey, but we're, we're looking at how much it's gonna cost us per block to, to replace a road. And right now, we've got it at around $7,500 per block. So you're looking at 10 blocks, it's gonna be $75,000. So if we, and that's from the ground up. So if, if we can go through and patch one, you know, which is what we can do on some of the worst ones, you know? But again, this is part of the plan that we're gonna be working on in the next few weeks, next month, to, to see what needs to be done with that particular road. I mean, if we can get by with a patch for a while, you know, uh, so...
We would appreciate anything.
No, no.
Appreciate anything at all, you know?
Totally understand.
Scott came back in the spring, right in front of our house. Our neighbor kept complaining about water standing at the edge of his driveway. So Scott, you know, in the street, got... So Scott, you know, and the street guys came in and we did all of that and they had to make this massive dip. It was just necessary. Now, all the new pavement and everything is completely torn up. I was looking at it this morning. There's places in it this deep where cars, you know, are hitting it. The city put up two signs, both like dip. So they have now torn that whole new area completely up and now with this rain, it's deteriorating apart.
Right.
You know, I don't know if we need a speed limit sign there, if that would help. I can tell you 50,000 different colors of the cars. Maybe some of those rumble, what are they called? Rumble strips or something like that? Make good your attention.
Well, if if you stay talk to a meeting, I'll look at your, where you where you're at. And I'd I'd like to look at what you're talking about.
Sure.
And we can evaluate it.
I mean, it was so nice. The guy's doing a super job. And Scott was, you know, he was right there and he was telling me every little step they were gonna do, what they had to do, because we ended up going from no curb at all and now we have a very deep curb.
Right.
Which looks very nice. The water drains wonderfully.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna continue to now that, you know, the cars have torn this the street all up.
Yeah.
You know.
I don't know. We'll look at it and see, and then we'll get back with you. Anything else? No, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. All right.
Move along. Here are requests for future agenda items from city councils. Anything else that needs to be on the agenda, please?
As usual, nobody talks. Do I have a? You have to have 10 next time.
All right, everyone. We'll get ready to go into executive session. Just let me know. Founder of City Council, Shreem, Executive Session is authorized by Texas Government Code Section 551.71, consultation with civil attorney, discuss no due to water contract limit and request no due to for reversion of conference expense associated with contract commitments. Thanks, y'all. Have a good day. All right, City Council, meeting the budget workshop session, discussing the proposed 2019 fiscal year budget. Basically, we made some changes to the budget at last meeting, so I think the majority of those were in the PD. So that's basically what took them for review, and we're basically just reviewing to locate what we've done in previous three meetings. Did that make sense?
Well, I got some, four or some more numbers, if y'all wanna hear me out.
You should do what now?
I'll work some more numbers.
For?
On my bu- on the budget. Looking at it, I was able to move some money around. Bottom budget line does not change at all. I forgot to print yours out, but.
Got a session, right?
Huh?
Got a session, one?
Well, I printed all, printed them out. I didn't think about me, so I got notes on this one. I'm sorry. But basically, the bottom line does not change at all, but I haven't moved some numbers around.
And why do you change them from what we'd already previously done?
To adjust the patrolman's salary and to add a corporal salary to the budget.
Okay, so you took some money out of patrolman's salary and added in the corporal salary. You took the money from patrolman's salary and put it into the corporal.
Yes.
Just made it more granular.
I mean, the patrolman's salary still counts for the new officer that we got coming on this next year. I did raise the clerical salary up just a tad bit. I had some numbers I needed to get rid of, so I'll put them there. Changed the corporal salary. Office equipment, about that up. Year-end salary adjustment, and then the loan payments. Pretty much the money, the extra money came from the loan payments.
And this covered both of your loan payments?
Yes, it covered both loan payments, with a little less.
For the cop seat and the new tall car, what's paying for?
Yeah, one.
Why did you change the end of your salary?
That's the Christmas bonuses, is what I was told. Is that right?
That's based on the plumber that we ever had.
Well, that it went down from what I had previous.
They're not paying $500 for each employee anymore.
Okay, so that's dropping.
Yep.
Okay. So I guess if that's a formula, then we can move whatever's left back into patrolman's salary or clerical salary.
So this was six employees total, or you're adding one?
Oh, that's with Anthony Hirsch that we got coming on.
So that's four plus Anthony.
Yes.
You not add another another employee?
No, that's that's with Anthony in the five I have, four.
So you count four plus Anthony as patrolman, and then you're counting corporal.
Ernst.
Ernst.
And then sergeant.
And then sergeant, and then you. So that still puts you at eight, right?
Six, seven, eight. Yep. Eight included myself.
When does Anthony come on?
He won't come on till May. So at least halfway into the budget, if not one. One. Eight months into the budget.
Does that mean to the one to five? One officer per 500. And he comes on.
All right, yeah.
Yep. Well, eight officers, that's 500 people up to 4,000 people, so that's 4,000 people. That's one per 500. So that puts you at the top. Correct?
Yeah, well, I mean, I wouldn't really count me in it, but if you want to, you go there.
Well, being a small department, yes. We're not gonna have the interstate angel. We've been over that, so.
So what's their salary? Is it 1530?
15, roughly around 1530 per hour, but that gives growing room to where I can adjust pay it maybe.
So you're actually adding money to the budget?
No, I haven't changed the bottom line number at all.
But you add more to the salary.
I'm adding more to the salary. So that way, when my two-year guys, three-year guys come on, I can actually bump them up, so that way my new rookie is not making the same amount as they are.
Is that a progression of the merit raise?
Not the merit raise, pretty much how we want to go with it. You know, we we start off, you know, for what both, granted, we're changing our sergeant pay because we're getting a year-end salary, I mean, a cost of living raise. So we gotta raise, raises our starting salary almost $15 an hour. So I got, you know, once he comes off probation and everything, he's making almost the same amount as a two-year officer. So I would like to have a two-year step, maybe even a three-year step, bring those officers up in pay, so that way you don't have that small amount just, you know, dividing somebody from a three or four-year person to a new year.
But in doing that, where is your overtime gonna be? Because that's just the base number, and then your overtime sticks in, and where can y'all stick in?
Now, overtime sticks in, I'm just adjusting overtime.
You didn't? So the corporate salary digits showing is Ernest, and he already got a pretty good bump the last three years, and we actually bumped him a multiple here in order to keep him. So where does this put him?
Uh, that I couldn't tell you, but I'm not gonna give that to him. That's just there to where it's it's capped. So, I mean, if he deserves a raise in a year or two, I'll give it to him. You know, that gives me that ability to do so. But I'm not gonna go right out the box and say, hey, you're getting this. Same way with the sergeant's salary. Sergeant's not making what is on there now. He's actually making a little bit less of the way. And they're trying to grow.
But the money's aren't carried over a year, are they?
No. I should use it. Use it like I'm making.
Money's aren't carried forwards. If you don't use your budget, you go back to the dirty money this year. You're just saying you want it in there in case you.
Yeah, I mean, if if we, if the numbers change, the stuff changes from bottom line in, you know, if we get the numbers changed where the handup is, then we all should be on the.
They gave him, they were going to 1530, they gave him a 3%, and now you want to give it more?
No, I'm not giving it more. I'm just getting a, an extra amount in that budget for if.
Are you gonna make a adjustment this year?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give them any. I'm not saying I'm gonna give them money soon as the budget comes in.
You're gonna say it sometime this month?
You know, I got, okay, I got Suzanne. You know, she comes on and, well, I gave her a raise in December. Granted, she didn't get it until July, but she technically, yeah, they got back. But technically, she's due, she can get a step raise back in December, you know. Then I can give her a little extra, get that step raise into her. So that way, you know, when I hire, do hire somebody, starting off, you know, there's a little bit of a gap. I'm not, I'm not gonna give them the whole, full, you know, kaboodle right away. It just gives me room to adjust salaries every.
This year?
Yeah, it's coming up here.
On top of the 3%?
On top of 3%. This includes the 3% plus a little extra where I can move stuff around.
God, without knowing, busting what the actual pay is for each officer, it's hard for us to evaluate exactly where he's going with this.
I mean, you don't want to pay his reach officer, honestly, not asking him his budget.
I bet you're asking him, so.
I'm asking anybody. I mean, he threw up an empty question. I'm going on him rebuttal. I said, do we need to know what his actual officer's pay is as long as he's within this budget?
We're already agreed on something, and now you want to pay anything something else?
Well, that doesn't want to be agreed on this time, first time.
We went back to where it was.
We did. Y'all changed it to background.
Did you visit with Tommy this week about this?
I haven't had a chance to visit. Tommy's been busy with everything else. I haven't had a chance to now talk to him. And if I've been busy or if he's been busy.
I'm sorry, did I catch Jason or?
No.
No, I would just say, I guess as the chief and the department head, he needs to be able to operate his men in a manner he deems fair. As long, I'm kind of in agreement with Jackson, as long as it doesn't impact the bottom line of where we're at here.
We basically changed the numbers within the scenario.
All right, he needs to move around the, run his department better. That's what we hired him to do. Run his department, right?
And it's kind of like anything else. He's got to have the ability to evaluate the people, and he thinks they're worth an increase. He'll be able to give it to them. I'd be happy to, to play his chief. But it's still hard for us to comprehend how much you talked about, what kind of increases in the gap we're talking about between these officers.
Well, it's pretty, I mean, instead of having a patrolman's salary, put down an officer one, officer two. Well, I mean, I'm serious. Would that be better, have it even more granular, than have your officer's salary?
You look at that. The top five chart gives the salary as it is for this current budget. Okay, if you notice, as it goes around, I have a 7% piece of that salary that's not being used. Okay, with the current number that y'all have on the budget now, the 196, I have zero, I'm actually, we're actually over budget by 800 bucks, by 1,000 bucks. Granted, I don't have my other one where I can show you, but. Adding, moving that stuff around, I'll actually have about a 7% chunk I can use to grow the department with raises for the officers. Not much, but it's something. Not much, but it's something.
What does that equal out to in dollars?
The 7%?
Yeah. Are 7% of your total budget, or does your...
Seven, 7% of the, um, 170, about it.
About the patrolman's salary?
Yeah, I think so.
179, I understand?
175.
We get the 175, and you have 175, okay, I see.
175 is current budget.
Okay.
I'll use the other base example.
Okay.
You fought so hard last time to get the 196, and now you're dropping to the 179, what'd you change?
Um, basically, I split it up where there's the corporal and a patrolman.
We just moved some money out of this budget.
Yeah. I mean, it's not...
We've talked about this, do we need all those different levels being in such a small department?
I think so. I mean, we have a sergeant budget. I mean, it puts a cap on the sergeant, puts a cap on the corporal.
I agree with that, Sam. Just in a time of 4,000, why do we have, that same number is captain's salary. That came up before when I was in council. And then when you designate those categories, somebody coming in will get into that salary bracket, corporal, sergeant, captain. You know, I don't know, I don't know that we need those areas in a small, Jason probably answered that better than anybody. He's military, but ex-military, but I, I just really wonder about corporal salary and things like that. That can get out of control, I think. Me, I see chief, assistant chief, that's what I see.
That 7% is about 12,000 dollars.
Is that what you have here on the chart as far as the room for growth, 12,968?
Say that again?
You're saying it's about 12, that's why I'm asking, you have this as far as the room for growth, is that what that is?
Yeah, that's what I have right now, is the 7%. Yeah. And right now, that number that we have on, on y'all's budget?
Yeah.
Adding everybody's, I sat down and added everybody's, we're actually going to be negative almost by $1,000.
When you say negative, what do you say negative?
Well, I mean, we didn't, last time we were adding everything, we didn't add it just right, and there's over almost $894 that's not going to be in the budget that we're going to go out with the 0%. I mean, we don't have to do the corporal, I wouldn't mind having corporal sought. If not, just move that whole thing to patrol. That's no biggie to me.
Is his duty is any differently?
Duty is no different. It's just that he was taking a big chunk out of my patrolman's salary.
That's...
So, I couldn't pay my other officers. That's why I was thinking, get him out of there, that way I'd know what I'm paying my corporal.
What, anything else?
As long as it's not impacting ba-, bottom line, it's broken.
Okay.
By the time it's off, he should be able to do whatever he wants as long as it doesn't affect that bottom line.
Stays with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll make the adjustments and go one more round. Do not bring back another one because we have a timeline, we have to meet, we're not going to meet the timeline.
Well, I'm going to, personally, I don't want to stay up in the middle of night. And I was going to talk about the annual budget, but since you changed the year-end salary just...
What made it?
I just had the question on, you know, the Christmas bonuses. It was changed, so I didn't know why. Now I know why, so, before I did about that much.
Okay. You said you need to talk about that after?
No, not anymore.
We did annual budget last time as well, did you not?
Uh, I don't think we did.
Okay, I would think we did, just like we did. So, good thinking. All right, other than ED, then anybody you can go through and look at anything else that was modified last time or changed? Because I think it was really just that department, most of it.
Most of CD last time?
Yeah. Y'all at least reviewing and just flipping through it?
Sure.
Okay.
I can probably say, man, who would that be?
That one, man? No.
Just making sure their interests are covered.
Their presence, so you know, know what you did.
Corporal role, airport department, paybacking. I had proposed 29,000, put a D-hanger, but they went through the eyes, they threw the show, show zero. That one was funny, never used it, and that's what we just took it out.
D-hanger loan payment, is that in case we built another one?
No, it's paying for the ones that are already out there. But we never moved the money.
Okay.
So, we just took it out.
I don't have any questions. Oh, yeah, one more, real quick. The mid, mid beverage tax, is that just a guesstimation, 5,000?
Yes, sir.
For a lot of the issues.
So, Brett, I see salaries, firemen, parole, is that your salary?
Uh, yeah, I'm going over there.
Yeah, but it's for that.
I don't know why, but there used to be two, Todd used to remember when Todd was there, now because they are changing.
Well, I wish at some point you'd come in with a little salary by the way, you should put a lot of time in.
Uh, when Brian was here, he gave me a credit.
Did he?
Did it, he said. That's why I'm not saying anything.
Well, I know that you guys, such an important department, you never ask for anything.
Do with what we got.
Okay.
Okay, one more?
Yes, sir.
Oh, on the court files? The budget was 85, we're not anywhere close to proposed as 50, what, what's going on there?
What page do you want?
First, oh, first page.
Okay.
42.
Okay.
They never been anywhere close to that. My name used to have it in there.
Is the 42 proposed actual, is that...
Difficult?
That's what the machine calculates, the ESI.
Based off the information of the past, what, three years?
Mm-hmm.
So, the projected is 42, but the actual is actually 31, 10,000 dollars difference?
10,000 in June when we made the support.
Okay, so it's not, that's not a full quarter, or annual, annual?
It's not up to date.
Okay.
We need to get back to 85. We, we need, we need to put Sam to work this time.
I don't think I ever got that close.
Never got there.
No.
Any other questions, concerns, come in? Everybody's reviewed, and everybody's okay at this point? Okay. And we'll make the changes one more time, and then we'll review it one more time. And then we have to have the public meetings.
What's the fifth round of the joint?
Well, next time, we're going to review any more changes, just kind of finalize a little, because that'll, that'll...
Obvious. Yes, that is correct. All right, if y'all have nothing else, then you can also do a adjournment.
Still not?
Second?
Three.
Okay, say hi, everybody's so high and calm, and I was like, well, okay, I'll... Next Monday night, ladies and gentlemen, will be at 10th, um, the 10th of September, 5:30, and then we will have another meeting on the 17th of September as well.